Bulavinaka and welcome to Bha. Namaste and a good evening to everyone who have turned up here today to the Fijian Media Association organized town hall. My name is Anish Chand and I represent the Fiji Times here this evening. And beside me is my co-moderator for this evening, Eva Meri, a senior journalist and investigative reporter from the Fiji Sun. Thank you for joining us here today at the meet the public and the press town hall. And we are coming live on all major TV, radio and online platforms owned by Fiji Media in this country. The whole nation is also watching tonight as we engage in this important public forum. This evening is about you, the people of Bha, getting direct access to the Prime Minister, Honorable Siti Veni Rambuka and his ministers and government officials who are here. It's a chance for you to ask your questions and hear firsthand what your government is doing on issues that matter. Without further ado, let me just introduce very quickly who at the head table is sitting with me, the Honorable Prime Minister. He's had a very busy day today, from Lotoka to Navua, back to Bha. Honorable sir, thank you very much for coming to Bha this evening. And joining him is Honorable Minister Felipe Tuisawau, representing the Public Works, Infrastructure and Transport. And of course, on the other side is Honorable Charanjit Singh, Minister for Sugar and Multi-Ethnic Affairs. We also have senior government officials who are seated in a very orderly manner on this side, Prime Minister, and some on this side, and they'll be answering questions should there be any for them. At this point in time, we want to thank everybody who has stood up to ask questions. We've been told there's more than 50 people who have been, who have turned up to ask questions to government reps who are here.
Vakal levu, Anish, for that opening. Dolavinah and good evening from me as well. Before we begin, I would like to outline a few house rules to ensure our program runs smoothly and fairly this evening. One question per person, please. No long statements, cut to the chase, keep it short and to the point. You may ask one follow-up question for clarification purposes only. State your name and community when you are asking your question. Thirty seconds per question. No personal attacks or insults. And please allow the panelists to finish answering your question before you ask of a follow-up question.
Thank you very much, Eva. And since we have a very busy evening ahead, we will kick off the proceedings. And obviously, the Prime Minister will be given the first chance to answer a question. And that's from me, Honorable Prime Minister. You were in Tavua yesterday, you are here today. We know that your government is doing a lot on the ground. We know that your ministers are working. But do you see at any point in time, do you see that your government is giving lip service to any community or to any issue in this country? And how are you handling that, sir?
Thank you very much, Anish. First of all, may I thank you all very much, ladies and gentlemen. I thank my honorable colleagues who are here with me and the honorable cabinet ministers who are up here. This has been organized by the Fijian Media Association. It is not a government initiative. So we have taken advantage of it because it brings us face-to-face with the people. And most of the people who turn up are those that are making things work or tick in your communities. And we thank you most sincerely for sacrificing your evening to be with us tonight. As Anish said, we were in Tavua last night. We slept in the west and got back to Suva and then to Navua this morning for a very important function. We went to do the groundbreaking for a local businessman who is putting in a multimillion-dollar development for a service station, a lube station and rest area for truck drivers traveling from the Western Division to Suva and also those who are coming in the opposite direction. I have been to do a lot of hotel development programs, whether it's groundbreaking or opening or commissioning. But there are those very important local businesses and local businessmen who do these things. So, Honorable Charanjit, and I thought it was very important for us to respond to the invitation of B Prasad and Sun's Private Limited in partnership with Total Energy to be at their groundbreaking ceremony this morning. And we were accorded full ceremony by the Turanatino Moshi Ngunivalu and also his people. They welcome the business opportunity that's offered, employment opportunities, as well as the government who has made a commitment to make things easier for investment. So to answer that question, whether we are only paying lip service to the things we say we would do, that is an example of a government actually walking the talk and a government that listens, a government that not only does lip service. We actually go and support and help those who are venturing out into the competition world of business and employment creation. So, a very simple answer to that, Anish, no, we don't just pay lip service, we actually walk the talk.
Thank you very much, Honorable Prime Minister, for your response.
Thank you. Now we will open the floor to questions. We have Mr. Narain Reddy who traveled all the way from Lotoka. So, Mr. Reddy is the representative of the Lotoka Rate Payers Association. Mr. Reddy, please, can you introduce yourself and direct your question?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen and Honorable Prime Minister. My name is Narain Reddy. I'm the president for Lotoka Rate Payers Association. I traveled from Lotoka to be here to highlight something that the people of Lotoka are holding very quietly in their heart. The people of Lotoka are about to lose another park for development purposes. With about 10 trees which are over 200 years old will be cut down. The Coronation Park, just opposite the Lotoka Regional Library, is about to be sold. The Rate Payers Association would like to request if the Prime Minister could chip in and help save that park. Previously, part of your government who were in opposition, they helped us to save that park about four years ago. We request the current government to help us save that park again. Thank you very much, Honorable Prime Minister.
Mr. Reddy has spoken about the Coronation Park in Lotoka, which is supposed to undergo a land development and with the infrastructure development. He is asking the government to intervene to stop this. He is saying that park should remain. And, Prime Minister, if you are not able to answer the question, we have the Permanent Secretary for Local Government, Sima Sharma, here. If you allow, then Mrs. Sharma can answer the question. Sima Sharma, PS for Local Government.
Honorable Prime Minister, Ministers and Assistant Ministers, that is an issue that Mr. Narain Reddy has raised. It actually hasn't come to the Department of Town and Country planning for any approvals at the moment. It is a civic zone and we will make sure that any such applications that come here goes through the proper scrutiny before any approvals or any applications are being processed. So be assured, Mr. Reddy, we will make sure if there's any such applications that's coming our way, we will also talk to the Lotoka City Council, sir, to make sure that they're taking all these things into consideration and not making any rushed decision into selling that park. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Reddy, you have a follow-up question?
One more question on that. We also request if before a decision is made on any of these things, a proper public consultation could be done first.
Okay. That is definitely part of the process, so it will be done.
Thank you very much.
Yes, the Minister for, Minister Tuisawau would like to offer some comments.
Good evening to all of you. Thank you for being here today. As a government, we of course hear the consultations, hear the feedback from the public regarding that issue. And of course, in terms of the policies we have, we, there's policies on the protection of forestry and also mangrove. And definitely, that is an issue which is in our hearts, in your hearts. So it's something that we will definitely be looking into, especially through the city council and the special administrator, through our Minister for Local Government. Thank you.
Honorable Charanjit Singh would also want to offer some comments on this topic?
Thank you, Mr. Reddy. I remember that when the Shelly Park was also handed out to a private company for development, your group, and of course, the rate piers of Lotoka had objected to that. We have lost three parks. One is, we lost Shelly Park, but fortunately, under our Prime Minister's coalition government that has gone back and Shelly Park will remain Shelly Park fully. A second one that we've lost was in Lambasa called Jasis Park, that's already been developed. But thanks to the Prime Minister and the coalition government, our policy would be to, all the open parks will remain open parks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are in Bha and we are talking about situation in Lotoka. That's a good start.
Thank you. Can we take the next question?
Honorable Prime Minister and also the honorable Ministers, a warm welcome this evening. My name is Paul Sephorana and I have a concern which I want to raise and to bring to your attention. And I need a response because of what has happened. Now, as we know, in the lead-up to the last elections, the political parties on their campaign trail, one of the main issues that was raised was in regards to the salaries and allowances. Now, fast track, after the election, they get elected and then they are sworn into parliament. One of the first actions of the members of parliament was to undertake and to request for an increase in salaries and allowances. Now, my question is, because as I said, on the campaign trail, it was a big issue in regards to, especially the excessive salaries and allowances of the previous government. Now, my question is, sir, why was it approved? And also, a follow-up to that is, if you are re-elected in the new, the next elections, will there also be another pay increase for the incoming members of parliament? Thank you.
Prime Minister, I think this is for you.
Well...
You can speak, it's on. The microphone is on, you can speak.
Thank you very much, Mr...
Sephorana. Mr. Sephorana.
Sephorana, sir.
Also known as Hanfiro. Sephorana is my birth certificate.
Vakal levu. Thank you for your question. Salaries and particularly for members of parliament is an issue that parliament itself handles, not necessarily the government. In fact, sometimes when they come up with recommendations, the government may hold back on it or ask them to reconsider, depending on the situation. The one that we have received recently was given a, an improper, probably wrong profile because it came behind or after a big reduction, across-the-board reduction in the salaries of the previous government's salaries and allowances because of the COVID effect. And when that was restored, plus the increase that was supposed to have happened and the recommendation under honorable, of the committee, the Emolument Committee of Parliament under the chairmanship of the Honorable Linda Tambuya, came back with that. And as you heard, it was not an easy thing for government to approve and, I mean, to carry through. It was a very lively debate, but at the end, we, our numbers carried it through. But we, I believe that we properly justified the increases through what we had said in the debate in parliament.
There's a follow-up question, sir?
And it's not an automatic thing that happens every time after election, eh? It has to be considered with all the salary increases and wages increases, minimum wage, et cetera, as we move along. You will remember in the days when we were younger, they used to have the cost of living adjustments, COLA. Now, the COLA formula is still being used. So everybody takes on an increase based on the cost of living adjustments, vakal levu.
One more question for you, sir.
Thank you, Honorable Prime Minister. As I asked on the follow-up, now if you are re-elected, will there be, if this is brought up again in regards to pay increment?
Not, it's not an automatic thing. It has to be considered with everybody else outside of parliament, the wage earners, the salary earners and all, and the international economy.
Thank you, sir. My second question, just a quick one. This was in regards to one of your cabinet ministers. She was disciplined in regards to an issue which was misconduct and she was dismissed from her position as a minister. Now, my concern is this, and now recently she has been reappointed. Now, what is the message that we are sending to our young people in regards to such conduct being undertaken by our senior people in society?
Thank you, Mr. Sephorana.
Vakal levu. My very simple response to that is, every sinner has a future and every saint had a path.
Thank you, sir. We'll have the next question. If you can have the next question, the next person, please, to come to the microphone.
I am Rukshana Jan from Watulolo. Regarding the termites, it's almost two years now we haven't been updated.
Termites.
Termites, yes.
He's worried about termites. Is there a representative from Lotoka City Council here, sorry, Bha Town Council, who has an update on termite situation in Bha or the ministry that deals with termites? Mr. Khan, Moshi Khan, Special Administrator of Bha, are you able to provide an update on the termite situation? Special Administrator of the Bha Town Council, Mr. Khan?
Bulav, Honorable Prime Minister and other ministers, the Assistant Ministers, Permanent Secretary and Directors, welcome to Bha Town. The termite issue, I think Biosecurity is handling, not the Town Council. So I request if any of the representatives from Biosecurity will be in the best position to answer this question.
Can we have someone from BEF? Is Biosecurity?
While we wait for a BEF rep, Minister Tuisawau would like to offer some comments.
It's only, thank you. Just going back to the last question, in terms of parliamentary salaries and all that, that can be reviewed, eh? It's subject to review. And that's something that we had discussed to be relooked at, eh? And the Biosecurity, the cabinet had appointed Honorable Sashi Kiran and Honorable Tumbuna to head the committee because of the urgency of the situation and they'd been working closely with the Biosecurity on that. In fact, they had had our budget and had been working. But the specific update on that we'll have to get from that team. But I believe that, what my understanding is, they have gone through the various areas which have been, where the infections are, and have taken the necessary to, necessary action and also the preventive action for that specific area to be confined there and also deal with it in that situation to stop the spread. Thank you.
Is there a Biosecurity Authority of Fiji representative here? No? Okay, thank you very much, madam. There's a government rep at the back who will take your contact down and it will be passed to the relevant ministry for action, eh? We have the next individual and the next question, please.
Honorable Prime Minister, Cabinet Ministers, residents of Bha, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dinesh Prakash Jan. I am a businessman of Bha Town and also a owner of one of the mini-buses, Ba Lotoka Route. Thank you, Prime Minister, for coming as we have seen all the portals in Bha have been filled up today. It has been all left over, but as soon as you have come to Bha, it was all filled up today. Very thankful to you, sir. My real issue, I came here, sir, transportation. Transportation is a very vital thing in everybody's life as a vitimini owner. In Bha, we have 40 vans operating from Ba Lotoka Bha, six Ba Tavua Bha and then two Ba Suva Bha, a total of about 50 vitimini. Looking at the stand, we have no facility, no convenience facility for the general public. In simple, we do not have any toilets and not proper water taps. I have raised this concern earlier with two meetings that has been held at the Town Council Hall, but I don't know where those, my concerns has gone to. But since we have got our Prime Minister now today in the town, thank you. And I want to share as how can we solve this issue, getting our bases at the same place? And whenever we reach Bha Town Council, they say those place belongs to FRA. In one of the meeting, one of the administrator, "I coat, tum ghar ek jao", means uncoat, means you take him to your home. That's not a very good answer to the question that I raised in that meeting. It has been very offending. I'm thinking about the people that has been traveling in and out of Bha, roughly about 3,500 per day, walking in Lotoka.
Thank you. I think we've got the gist of your question. Minister, would you like to respond? Minister responsible for transport?
Thank you. Thank you for your question. Just to reiterate that before we travel, we don't patch the patrol. The patrol is road maintenance, is already part of a program maintenance, eh? So it's already been done, I think, some time ago, not just before we travel. I know you maybe did this as a joke, but I'm just explaining the process, eh? But thank you to all of you who have raised issues regarding the roads, regarding the facilities, eh? That's what you're asking, the minibus. So I'll ask, I think that's an issue with the Town Council and probably the stand with FRA who are also here, if they can...
The Bha Town Council, SAE, Mr. Khan, if you're able to answer or if your acting CO is here, either of you can come and answer and then... is here, either of you can come and answer and then the FRA rep, please get ready after this. What the gentleman has claimed, is it true or false and if you can offer an explanation, please?
Thank you, thank you, Dinesh, for your concern. I know that you have been raising this concern when we've been appointed as a special administrators. Yes, we have considered that, sir, and we have proposed a new vitimini space. Since when we liaised with FRA, FRA responded us that the public convenience cannot be made there because that's a road reserve. And we have proposed a new space for them, which they did not agree to it. And now the council is working with LTA to identify another space for them, sir, where we can provide them with the proper facilities.
How soon can we expect this?
We are still looking for space. We have allocated, we have identified a space. We'll just work with the LTA to see whether the event can be run from there or not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a follow-up question, Dinesh? Can we have the LTA rep or the FRA rep to elaborate on this, if you can, please? There's a gentleman getting up, who was very busy last night.
I'm Bulu Benata, the Prime Minister, to the members of the Bar community. Yes, FRA doesn't allow public convenience on the road reserve, it falls under the jurisdiction of the Bar Town Council. And I think we've been working on the alternative space for the minibus stand and where we can relocate them.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Dinesh. I think we'll go to the next question, I think all the answers have been given. Thank you very much, Dinesh, next question, please. Do you have a follow-up?
Can we have, my second one is, can we have the health center, the Bar Health Center, which is closed on Saturdays? Can we have regular service on Saturdays so that we can have a smooth flow? People congested, the SPN can come back to, since it's closed on Saturdays?
Any rep from the Ministry of Health around? Thank you. Please introduce yourself, give your name and your designation so that the Prime Minister knows.
Okay, Bulavinaka, Honorable Prime Minister, I'm Dr. Anushil Shand. I'm the Acting SDM of Bar Public Health. So in regards to your question, in terms of the running of the Bar facilities, especially the health center facilities, we are still in the talks of making that happen and possible. There are internal processes still going on to have a smooth running of health services even during, even during weekends and public holidays, especially after, after SPN Medical had declared that, that, what? That GOPD services would be limited in the weekends and public holidays. We are still in the talks of that. Hopefully, it would be made to happen soon.
Please, I request this process can be faster. People are suffering, so if your process is faster, we can access to your health center.
Of course, I understand and we'll definitely, we are working on it and we'll definitely work on it better.
Thank you very much, Acting SDM, thank you very much. Thank you. Just a reminder, you may also ask your question in Ithoke or Hindi if you would like, we have translators in the room, thank you.
Your Excellency, the Prime Minister, honorable ministers, permanent secretaries. My name is Kellera Leoni Lobo and I'm representing Bar District Council of Social Services, also representing, representing the communities and villages of the Bar District. I have issues to raise here, about four issues, sorry, I'll be taking about, say, three minutes and recommendations, but no questions. The first issue raised is, these are issues faced by small-scale sugarcane farmers regarding first, the cane truck rates. So we kindly request that the Ministry of Sugar can review and standardize cane truck rates based on distance and accessibility so that all farmers are treated fairly and truck owners are also justly compensated. Secondly, cane cut, cane cutter's rates. We ask the government to introduce a standard cane cutter rate, developed through consultation with farmers and worker representatives so that both parties can benefit fairly. And number three, low productive, productivity and lack of technical support. Many cane fields are aging and yields are low, so farmers need more training and technical support to improve soil health and adopt modern climate, smart farming practices. So we request more frequent visits and assistance from extension officers, officers through the Sugar Research Institute of Fiji and the Ministry of Sugar. Vinaka.
Thank you, Kellera. I think the minister wants to respond. Three issues, Minister, she asked about if the rates for the trucks can be standardized so that everybody gets a fair price. Then she spoke about cane cutter's rate, whether it can be looked into and the low productivity in the sugar industry.
Thank you very much, madam, for your three questions. The first one is all about the rates for the trucks and transportation. I think if we go back, there is a standard master award that is the bible of the sugar industry. That has to be followed. However, we are more than into action now to review the master award whereby the farmers can get a fair price and the farmers can also get a, a rate which is suitable from the distance there their farms are. So we are definitely working on that. I know that issue has been there for many, many years ago. Unfortunately, we have inherited, this government has inherited a problem that was there in the last twenty years. And I have instructed the Sugar Terminal and the FSC and all the stakeholders to quickly hold and update this master award whereby our farmers can get a, a rate which is suitable or enough for them to cover costs or even make slightly profit for the transportation. Now, the second question that you asked is about the harvesting costs, cane cutter's rates. It's, it's very difficult, it's very difficult for us to control that because I'll tell you, you may be offering fifteen dollars a ton, your neighbor will offer twenty-five because he wants to get his cane out. So it's like whoever pays higher, I can't stop them, you know? Even, I know that's happening in Bar, Tabu, in Llamasa too. So it's something that if you, if you stop them from getting any higher rate, they may opt to do some other job because everybody wants to have an extra dollar in the, in the pocket. However, we as government have approved that we'll give three dollar per ton extra for the manual labor cost. So that's something that government's policy is about. But to be honest, I can't tell Mr. Z that you can't cut cane for Mr. Y because we all should have the same rate. Every, every part of the country, everybody needs additional dollars in the pocket. So I can't, I can't promise you that, but however, I could talk to the Ministry for Labor to, to see how they can do something about this. But as you know, that we've got a minimum wage, minimum wage that government has approved and, and we are following that legislation or the rules now. And finally, for your question about the FSC's extension officers, as you know, that yes, extension officers were there in the yesterday's. I have actually emphasized to FSC, I have asked them that they should go back to the old model where the farmers should be met by these extension officers so that they can be taught, they could be guided to see that how their production can go up. However, I'll let you know one thing, our farmers have been sitting on forty-seven tons per hectare of cane for the last fifteen years. Actually, to make your production, you need to double. If you want to make money in sugar industry, sugarcane, you have to double your crops. I have doing it, I have, as a good example, in Llamasa, on my own farm, I'm producing hundred and thirty tons per hectare. And here, farmers are sitting on forty-seven tons per hectare. But I'm using my, my example and I'm tasking FSC to go everywhere, give farmers the guidance and give them the advice. And we have brought in a lot of machines now. We have brought in basically cane planters, which does double row planting, we have brought in fertilizer applicators and, and, and of course several other equipment. So my advice to you, madam, is this, we have got fourteen different type of assistance that we are giving from the FSC and the sugar industry. Please go and talk to our FSC workers here and if they don't listen to you, you are most welcome to talk to me later on and I'll tell them because I want every farmer to be helped. Vinaka.
Mr. Singh, can we just ask you one question? Can you give a timeline to Kellera when the master award review will begin and end?
Thank you, Anish. Well, we had started with that exercise about two months ago and we are hoping that before the next harvesting season, we will amend the master award.
Deputy Secretary for Employment and Workplace Relations, Atish Kumar is here. Are you able to give an insight, Mr. Kumar, on rates for cane cutters? Can the ministry look into it? Mr. Kumar?
Thank you, Honorable Prime Minister, Cabinet Ministers. Thank you, yes, I think when you, when you calculate the rates of cane cutters, they are paid well above the minimum rate. The current minimum wage is five dollars, but when you calculate in terms of the tons which they are cutting, they are paid well above the minimum rate. So in terms of the Ministry of Employment, we only review and regulate the minimum rates of pay and of course, anything above that, then of course, we, the, the free market concept is applied where Honorable Minister has very well explained, if someone pays more than a person, definitely you want to go and cut cane for the other person. So we at the Ministry of Employment, we only regulate in terms of the minimum rates of pay per industry. Thank you.
We'll take the next question.
Oh, good evening, Honorable Prime Minister, the government ministers and other stakeholders and the public. Thank you very much for being here tonight. I don't have a question, I have a request.
Can we have your name?
My name is Paulia Simatowalu from Landaribatu and I'm here in Bar. Sorry. And my request is, I need support from the government for a project we are trying to go through with and that is to build a hydroelectricity dam. And that is Angaliwana Hydro Project in Landaribatu, which is sitting right on our land. We also had land given to Monosabu, about thousand acres and also in Landaribatu Dam, couple of thousand acres, and we were getting peanuts from there. And we had, we've had enough of EFL. So that is why we want to build the dam ourselves. We had all the papers done, we hold everything done and we are just needing support, full support from the government, Honorable Prime Minister.
Sir? Honorable Prime Minister or Minister Tuisawa?
Navalevo. We will need your proposal. All you need to do is to draw up a proposal, get a, some technical details and assistance and then bring it to government. Government will try and source funds to go into cooperation with you on your, on your sort of...
Project.
Private...
Bar project.
Yes. Because the government now, you know, with the SPN Hospital, is encouraging the public-private cooperation in the, in the partnership there, PPP, private-public, private. And the same thing can apply to you because that is exactly what government is looking for nowadays. We are trying to switch from fuel, energy, fuel-generated energy to renewable energy sources. That will be one that we can take up and with the Ministry of the Environment, we can take it up to the climate funding people and make the proposal. But we must have that proposal ourselves, take it up with its, with its full potential and the funders will fund it.
Thank you. We have had all those papers ready, the proposal and everything. We came through the TLTB, when the Ministry of Fiji Affairs, and we talked with EFL and we talked with TLTB and we were just waiting for them to sign MOU with us so that we can get PPA from EFL so that funds can come in. But we'll come through to your office to talk with you and see what happens.
Navaka.
Navaka, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Matowalu. I will take the next question, please. Kerkerre, introduce yourself and where you from? Thank you. Can we have the representative from Lands? Can we have your name and designation, please, before you give your answer?
My apologies, my name is...
Repeat myself in English for the benefit of those that couldn't. He was asking whether we should, they are asking for land to be allocated to build a church to answer the social ills of drugs and things like that that we're having now, eh? And I said to him, most of the drug centers, if you can call them that, are from villages and settlements that have great big churches in, built in them. So the answer is not in the church, but it's in the people. Anyway, whatever he's going to say.
Thank you, good evening, Honorable Prime Minister and the Cabinet Ministers. My name is Ura Rakaria, the Divisional Land Manager Western from the Ministry of Lands. In reference to the query that's raised, but then gentlemen, if the correspondence is there, we will do our due diligence in terms of the inspection and we'll raise the submission if there is validity and credibility to have the list issued on the church. So we'll be liaising with the gentlemen after this. Vinaka. I'm from Lutu. I work in Nenronro. I work in Nenronro. I work in Nenronro.
For your response, Minister Tuisawo, we wanted to offer some comments on this topic?
No, I just wanted to... I'm from Nenronro. I'm from Nenronro. I'm from Nenronro.
Thank you. Maybe just a follow-up to that question. Instead of requesting for a church, the Acting Police Commissioner is here, Mr. Apurosa Lutunawunga. So I think the issue that the gentleman from Nai Nenronro is raising is the high criminal activities that's occurring within the area. So what can the police do about that? So instead of looking to a physical building as a solution, what can the police provide?
Acting Commissioner of Police, Apurosa Lutunawunga.
Thank you, Bulmeraka. And I acknowledge the presence of the Honorable Prime Minister and the Honorable Cabinet Ministers. To address your questions on the issues of crime. It is not only here, it is a national issue on drugs. And the response for those critical issues that is emanating from your villages. It is not a police alone issue. It is a whole of government and whole of Fiji approach, where each and every stakeholder has a role to play. And first and foremost, it must start from home, where it should start. Looking after our families, teaching them good values. And then the community or the village has their role in assisting. As they say, it takes a village to raise a child. Then we have to come out again into the government systems. And we have a government for us here, the police and other stakeholders, that will assist you. As far as awareness is concerned, and our Community Policy Officers is out there. They are moving into the villages. And I know, and you know that they have been to your villages and having discussions in the way forward of addressing these critical issues. And the police will be able to provide this support in your youth engagement programs so that you could divert these kids away from the issues that you are raising today as far as drugs is concerned. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. We'll go to the next question from the floor.
I'm from Lutu. I work in Sowery Settlement. I work in Sowery Settlement. I work in Mbaasi. 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 Kerker, I work in Mbaasi.
Winakale, for the sake of our non-Fijian speakers, the gentleman is asking about the road to his area. We have the Minister for Transport here.
I'm from Lutu.
Oh, Sowery Settlement.
Sowery Settlement. Yo, thank you. So just for the benefit of our audience, I'll address it in English. But so, for the government in terms of the roads, the maintenance and upkeep of the roads. The government, at the moment, is working through Fiji Roads Authority and the Public Works Department. So the Fiji Roads Authority budget has been increased by thirty-seven million. As part of that, there's thirty million we have allocated for the upgrading of community and rural roads. So this will take away that excuse that FRA only looks after FRA roads. So that mindset, the coalition government has taken that away. And this kind of request will be catered by that budget. So I'm from Lutu. I'm from Lutu.
FRA? Also on that, can the FRA rep just clarify whether his road is also on the list of upgrades?
I'm from Lutu. I work in maintenance. I work in maintenance.
Thank you very much, we will go to the next question. There's a madam on the floor.
Good evening, Honorable Prime Minister, Cabinet Ministers, the media and guests of today's evening. I'm Jacqueline Luck, representing Bah Vision. Bah Vision is an eye clinic and surgery center. And we have been serving the community since 2011. And in these fifteen years of community service, Bah Vision has faced many a number of challenges and obstacles which we have come through. But this evening, I would like to mention the most recent disappointments with regards to the Ministry of Health. To begin with, it's, as I said, Bah Vision is an eye clinic and surgery center. We provide eye care services, we specialize in eye surgeries. And since we do not have the skill locally available, we invite volunteers and surgeons from other countries to come and provide their skilled services to help the Fijian community. And we have been doing this since 2011, as I mentioned earlier. But this year, the disappointment was, in spite of meeting all the requirements that the Fiji Medical Council has according to their checklist, these specialist, award-winning surgeons were refused a registration and not allowed to enter into Fiji to perform surgeries and help the community. I have more than hundred patients waiting for their cataract surgeries and retina treatments, which is not available in Fiji. And then these patients keep knocking at our doors, requesting for our services. And I get a rejection from the Ministry of Health. And I don't know the reason. When these same surgeons has visited us in the past three years, eight times, they were given the registration. But on this ninth application, their registration is kept on hold and they have not been registered.
Thank you, madam, I think we get the gist of what you're trying to ask. I think it's an overall question related to the health sector, Prime Minister. If you want to respond, the question was that the vision, Bah Vision, wanted to bring in experts from Bah to conduct a cataract operation in Bah. But the Ministry of Health did not give permission or allow the experts from overseas to come and do the procedure in Bah. So that's why she is a bit frustrated, not bit, a lot frustrated. And she's asking, why has this happened to Bah Vision, which is trying to help the poor and needy on the ground?
Any health representative, please, if you...
Before your question to the Ministry of Health and the Medical Services, I understand your problem. I have recently received another request from the Bible College in Lutoka, who have been asking for their ophthalmologist or something like that to be granted work. And I've asked the Minister for Health and Medical Services to look at that issue. Because we have doctors that come and join with our Fiji professionals. But they have to have that permit issued by the ministry. Ministry of Health?
Is the Ministry of Health rep, do you have an answer or they don't have it? Just a follow-up, Prime Minister, do you think the Ministry of Health should be stopping experts from coming to Fiji to do...
They should not be stopping, they should be facilitating. And to be able to do that, facilitating means they have to check on the... They have to verify the various qualifications and so on. Because they are putting our patients into their hands. And ultimately, it's the government that is responsible. So before the government can allow them to practice with our citizens, we must verify ourselves that they are properly qualified to do that.
So just continuation to that, these same surgeons...
Can we let the next person come on because we have already gone one hour? If you have another question, you can...
Request, please, because it's continuation to what the Prime Minister has just said. These surgeons who were refused their registration have already visited us with all requirements met by the Fiji Medical Council for eight times. And on the ninth time, there is no objection from their qualifications. We have met the Fiji Medical Council who gives the registration. But according to them, they were asked to keep it on hold and an instruction scheme from Ministry of Health.
Thank you, we heard you. We will take further information from you on that case and liaise with the Minister of Health to look at the issue. Thank you.
Thank you, we'll take the next question. We'll only be taking one question, there will be no follow-ups. Keep in mind, we have a timeframe, so next question, please.
Good evening, Honorable Prime Minister and the Ministers and the media team. My name is Jyoti Lal, representing Fiji Rental Coalition, I'm the Vice President. And we have a big issue in our rental industries. First of all, no one wants to take our insurance. And we have very big stakeholders in insurance, but all are declined our insurance policy. Secondly, the age, aging of the vehicle, we want to amend the aging through LTA to get the technical advisors to check the vehicle conditions. Then make addition for the vehicle rental car industries. Thank you, sir.
Any representative from LTA?
The minister is directing the LTA to come forward to respond. Please give your name and your designation.
Winakale Bulmeraka, Prime Minister and Cabinet Ministers. My name is Samuel Vitale. And I'm the Manager Regulation, looking after the operations of rental and other PSB permit in Fiji. Thank you. Just to answer your question on the age limit for rental vehicles, this has been renewed lately. And it was extended from three years to five years for second-hand vehicle. And further review is coming. This will be based on an audit on all the rental vehicles in Fiji. The audit is part of our check and balance based on the number of complaints we have received on the conditions of vehicles. So after the audit, then we will be able to carry out another review if we need to increase the age of vehicle. Thank you.
Actually, sir, we have a technical team in LTA. They are allowed to check the vehicle, then give the permission to drive.
Thank you, sir. Part of the review of that age limit is also inclusive of the review of our vehicle examiners, who carry out the check. But it's specifically based on the age that was increased lately. Just on the insurance part, there was a discussion with Consumer Councils last week. And there will be continued discussion because of the many risks associated with rental vehicles and lower bond that they have charged. Insurance is reluctant to issue insurance cover for rental vehicles. Thank you.
And some of the insurance companies are charging excess more than four thousand per claim. How this consumer going to pay that four thousand?
Thank you, sir, thank you very much for your concern. I think you have been heard, can we have the next question? This is a lovely two and four we have. And the next person is lining up at the microphone to give the next question.
My name is Mukesh Chan. I'm Advisory Counselor, representing Valele, Club Court, Rotary Club, Lamso, Tavemenga, Mutuni and Korobatu. I would like to thank Honorable Prime Minister and his team to avail themselves to listen to our people's daily problem as holders. For Rotary Club, I would like to take this opportunity to thank the government for providing us a grant of ninety-five thousand three hundred for upgrading of the road. Unfortunately, we have bus service not provided because of Ben and Kelbert Crossing, very narrow. So we're just asking if the government can help on that. So we've got five hundred people living there, schoolchildren, senior citizens. And we need a bus service on that road.
Thank you, what's the name of the road again?
Rotary Club Road.
Okay. So we will note that and LT will follow up, unless you want to make a specific comment on that route?
What is wrong with that road?
No, the route, they don't have a bus.
Oh, the bus service.
The bus...
Bus service.
LT Bah Dochmur.
You can go and see LTA rep soon after this and he will be able to update you on what can be done.
Thank you, sir.
Is there another issue there with you?
Yes, I got Korobatu Settlement, Valele. They need an extension of water main line. For Korobatu is approximately one kilometer and for Valele is four hundred meters.
Extension of water main, Korobatu and Valele.
I'll ask you what authority of Fiji just to contribute?
Yes.
In terms of water, which is a very important issue right now. Thank you, see you.
Hang on, let Mr. Sero Sederberg answer the question first and then proceed.
Winakale, Honorable Prime Minister, Honorable Ministers. Sir, just with respect to water supply needs for Korobatu, the community you're referring to, sorry?
Your community, your settlement, sir?
Korobatu. Korobatu, thank you, sir. So we currently have a contract that they're doing detailed design. Part of the detailed design is the upgrading of the main, the trunk main, starting from Valele down towards Nabau. Once we upgrade that pipeline, which is in the new financial year, then we'll be able to provide services to Korobatu. At the moment, we can't do that because the pipeline is old and fragile and we cannot operate it with high pressure. Any high pressure means that line will... So we'll be able to do that after we upgrade in the upcoming financial year, sir.
Thank you, we'll take the next question. Thank you, sir. Next question, please?
Can we have the next question?
Next question. Next person, please?
The next person, can we have the next person, please? We are just trying to move quickly because one hour has ended this evening.
Winaka, the Honorable Prime Minister and the Honorable Ministers of Dolabina. I am Celestin Ovaldo, the village secretary of Wotua Village. I have an issue to be brought up to with the Minister of Sugar and the Lenz Department. We have a land at Karavi, about forty-four acres of land, it belongs to the state. And since 2021, we've applied for the lease and it was approved way back in 2022. And we want to plant it, to have a sugar cane farming. But since it was approved when we applied for the contract number with the Sugar Tribunal, the Sugar Refinery Research Institute, they told us that we are not able to plant sugar cane because the land is too salty. So way back in nineteen ninety-five, our elders used to harvest sugar cane. So way back in nineteen ninety-five, our elders used to harvest sugarcane. We've spent about forty-nine thousand, more than fifty thousand, I believe, in order to secure that land. And we've talked with the Sugar Refinery Institute and with the Bar offices. And according to them, they told us that it is, there is a possibility that the sugar, if they planted with the Ngaloa variety, it will survive that area. But we have two requests. We are requesting the Ministry of Sugar, since we do not have a contract number, if they could assist us with the drain, upgrading of drains and the roads and the planting of seed cane. And towards the Lands Department. While waiting for FSC or for us to plant a sugarcane, we would request them if they could freeze our land rent in Naboliwo.
Minister Singh, would you like to offer some comments? There's a rep for Sugar Research Institute of Fiji here tonight too. If you want to ask them to explain about this salt water intrusion, then you can do that.
Thank you very much, Janish, I've got my Permanent Secretary, Vinesh. Where is Vinesh? Can you come over and explain to this gentleman? Because he's also a former CEO for the Sugar Research Institute. So he'll be in a better position to explain. But after this session, we'll also have a one-to-one meeting with you.
Thank you, Honorable Minister and thank you, Honorable Prime Minister. My name is Vinesh, I'm the Permanent Secretary for Multi-Ethnic Affairs and Sugar. Firstly, we are aware of your situation in Karabi. We are knowing that you had challenges because it's a saline solution, I mean saline soil. So we have got our research team there, I have just talked with Elisoni. So after this, we'll have a discussion with you how we can proceed. But having said that, we'll start with Galawa variety. After, I mean, we will test some varieties there. Definitely, we've got a variety that can survive there. The other challenge you have, as you mentioned, is salinity because of water log situation. So that is something that we can discuss with you. And the third one you asked is assistance in terms of planting cane. The thing is, under the current programs that we have, we have got a grant for, we call it for cane planting grant. And the challenge there is that you should be an existing farmer. But in your case, if you are really interested, we are giving exceptional cases for farmers who want to take up sugarcane farming. Definitely, we'll assist you. We also have got the tribunal at Sugar House. I probably will make an appointment with you today when you are free. Definitely, you can come over and we'll assist you in terms of getting a contract. So we can assist you, we can ask Sugar Researcher to assist in terms of doing some trials in a small portion, maybe half acre or one acre, to see if some of the other varieties can do. Since I have also got the platform, Honorable Minister, I think this is one of the challenges that we have in the Western Division. And this is for our good sugarcane farmers. The issue is that we have got a variety that is there for long, which is Mana variety. Predominantly, this variety was supposed to be planted on undulating land as well as land which has got challenges in terms of water stress conditions. Now, we have brought that variety in flatlands. So Sugar Research or in the sugar industry has released nineteen varieties. And they have got different places where it should be planted. So probably after this, Honorable Minister and Prime Minister, we would definitely talk with him and see how best we can assist you. But definitely, we would be able to help you, sir. Thank you.
Naka, PS, Ratu, I hope he's answered your question. Can we have the next person, please?
Thank you very much, I'm just requesting the Lands Department if they could freeze our land rent, please.
Lands rep?
While waiting for the process of the FSC.
Thank you, sir, for the land rent, this is something that is mandatory in all the leases that we issue. And it's mandated in the Act as well as the State Lands Regulation that it has to be paid by early every six months. So unfortunately, sadly, sir, we are unable to freeze your rent. But if you face difficulties in making your payments, you can always make part payments or come to us so that we can discuss to have an undertaking to make those part payments.
Naboliwo, gentlemen.
Naka, next person, please.
The Honorable Prime Minister and members of the public, my name is Sangita Kumar. I'm an Advisory Counselor for Tuvu, Tawarau and Na Tawarau area. My question is regarding water scarcity during the ongoing dry season. Requesting funds, requesting funds for drilling of more boreholes in my constituency, thank you.
Mr. Tuisawau, you got that, she's an Advisory Counselor from the Greater Tawarau area. And she's concerned about the drought that is looming in the area now. She's asking for boreholes in the area. And if there's a possibility that they can be assisted with this dry season looming.
Yes, definitely, the water situation is not only here but also throughout our other main island in Naboliwo. We, as a government, we, in terms of the planning part, we have a water sector plan twenty fifty. And all that in the long term, we are putting in place plans, mitigation measures, etc. But in the budget, the government has allocated six point five million for boreholes. So the Ministry of Lands is working closely with Water Authority of Fiji with that. And of course, we can definitely look into your request today. But I'll ask Water Authority to just explain some of the measures in place to mitigate the current water situation in the region. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sodaberg, your boss wants you to come on the floor again to explain. The question is about the looming dry conditions in the Western Division.
Honorable, thank you very much, madam. In the interim, water cutting is available for the Tawarau community. We'll see you after this to discuss on the borehole request. So we can take that information back with us and work with the MRD to see how we can program your request into this financial year.
Thank you, Mr. Sodaberg, ma'am, you may see the CEO for the Water Authority after this event. Next person, please.
Good evening, Honorable Prime Minister and ladies and gentlemen. Today, I'm here to ask about-
Can we have your name, please, quickly?
Arthi Devi, Advisory Counselor of Bar Town, Varandoli, Yalilebu. I just wish to know if our business is operating on a residential lot? Can it be converted to, can it be converted to commercial? Since it has been operating from six years with a proper license. Thank you.
The Permanent Secretary for Local Government, I think this falls under your ambit. Can we have you to please explain the response? She's asking about zoning, rezoning of lots in the Bar Town. Sima Sharma, the Permanent Secretary for Local Government.
Thank you for your question. Obviously, you can apply for a rezoning in, for that, for that operations. There will obviously be certain criteria that you would need to meet before the rezoning is approved. And because there is a provision under the Town Planning Act that looks at home-based businesses. And there's a list of criteria that you are required to meet. So you can definitely go to the Bar Town Council and discuss with them in terms of a rezoning application. Thank you.
Is there another question, Sima, a quick one?
Madam, we have already done that, but the license has been rejected by Bar Town Council.
Maybe we can talk to her after this and just find out what exactly they should.
Thank you, you can meet soon after this session to iron out this situation. Can we have the next person at the microphone, please?
Welcome to Bar, sir, and Honorable Ministers. My name is Shaen Singh, I'm from Kumkum Village in Bar. My question today concerns most citizens. The question is, the question is, what, when will the government take issue with the banks and telcos on the exorbitant fees they charge citizens? Charges such as monthly account charges, money withdrawal charges, limited amount of withdrawals allowed, ATM charges. All of these charges are levied to everyday citizens under the guise of a savings account.
I think he's asking about elderly citizens of this country who are levied charges by banks. Is that correct, sir?
That's correct, yes. Under the guise of savings account, you know, you have-
Elderly citizens having saving accounts and the banks are charging fees and levies that is hitting the balances of the elderly. So he's asking whether government can look into this.
Yeah, the, anybody here from Ministry of Women and-
Social Welfare, a representative?
Is there somebody from Social Welfare, Ministry of Social Welfare?
Thank you.
Social Protection, sorry.
Yeah, social.
Please introduce yourself.
In terms of social protection, which covers the elderly, in the budget, we have allocated allowance for, in terms of family assistance, social pension, etc. And some of these are also assisting the elderly. But I'll ask our staff here to contribute. Some of the charges are, is from commercial entities, eh? So as you understand, you know, government cannot interfere with the commercial operations and how they are charges. But there are some which come under, or which are scrutinized by the various government entities, including the Fiji Competition Commission and which regulates some of these. But definitely, we hear you today. But I'll ask our staff from our ministry to elaborate further on that, thank you.
Bulavinaka, Honorable Prime Minister, Ministers and stakeholders. I'm Elbin Kumar, Welfare Officer based in Bar Office. Just to answer your question, sir, all our social protection recipients, our ministry has a memorandum of understanding with the BSP at the moment. So all our recipients with BSP are not charged any fees, withdrawal fees, bank fees, either be fees for taking out their bank statements. So our recipients are not charged unless they have their accounts with Westpac and any other banks, that is when they are charged. But our ministry had a massive transition whereby our recipients were advised to move from other banks to Bank of South Pacific, with which we have a memorandum of understanding. Thank you.
Does that answer your question, sir?
Well, sort of, because that basically covers a particular class like social welfare recipients. But I'm talking about everyday citizens. ANZ, Westpac, they don't levy the same charges in Australia or New Zealand. But when you go for a withdrawal in the bank, that's everyday citizens, it affects all of us here. You go in, they charge you four dollars for a withdrawal, fifty cents for an ATM transaction.
Thank you very much, I think Minister Tuisawau has said it's a commercial issue and I think it's bad.
The, as you understand, the commercial operations of the banks are regulated by the Reserve Bank of Fiji. And that is an issue which has been raised by citizens like you today. And definitely, we will convey that concern from this forum today to the governor of the Reserve Bank.
Thank you, sir, we'll take the next-
Their regulatory role, thank you.
Thank you.
Next person, please. Please keep your questions real short.
Good evening to the respectable minister and the prime ministers and all the other respected guests. Myself, my name is Momana Zakhatan, I am the Secretary of Bar CV Horse Racing Club. My concern here is that our previous government, the Fiji-Fresh government, funded us a horse racing, a multi-purpose course here in Bar. And they told us that this course is for the people of Bar. And now, right now at the moment, before, the thing was like organized by the Bar Town Council. And as horse owners, like mostly all the horse owners who are here are like the agriculture farmers, agricultural background. So this is just like an entertainment purpose for all of us. But right now at the moment, the Bar Town Council, they separated the thing from Bar Town Council and they gave it to another club. So there was like some dispute in the club and then we made another club, Bar CV Horse Racing Club. In the first year, we did nine races. Second year, we did only five races. And this is the third year, we are only doing four races till now. And before it was like five hundred dollars-
Sir, can you cut to your question, please?
Before, the ground fees was five hundred dollars. And now, the ground fees has moved to eight hundred and ten dollars. So we would like to request the government, if this was funded by the government for the people of Bar, why can't this thing be like little bit cheaper for us? This is not like, we don't get benefit from there, we don't get any like-
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. We only thought disputes were in soccer, but there's disputes in horse racing too. So this evening, I think Assistant Minister for Youth and Sports, Ali Kimbia is here, Honorable Ali Kimbia. If you please can offer some comments and justify the query he has raised.
What's the name of your horse?
Sir, thank you, Honorable Prime Minister, for the gentleman. Unfortunately, for horse racing, it's not an officially registered sport in Fiji like the other minor sports and the major sports that we have. But if you do have confirmation that has been funded by the past previous government, we also do offer support through minor sports throughout the country. But that is catered through the Fiji Sports Commission. So our job from the Ministry of Youth and Sports is to do grassroots development around the country. But for the sports that are registered through the Fiji Sports Commission, that are actually funded at every financial year. So if horse racing is registered through the Fiji Sports Commission, then you will be able to be funded at every financial year when government announces its budget.
I think the answer has been given, you have to register with the Fiji Sports Council to-
Fiji Sports Commission.
Does that answer your question, sir?
No, my main question is regarding the rate of the horse racing facility.
I believe his question is, why are they being charged that amount?
The Bar Town Council Special Administrator, Mr. Khan, do they have a venue? Do you have a place for them to horse race?
Thank you, Nazakat, for raising this question. Out of that, the charge that council does, hundred and ten dollars goes to Ministry of Labour for OHS, to get OHS compliance. And as you know, that any facilities or any, it has to be OHS compliant. Secondly, I know I was also a horse owner and it's a major issue. So I have talked to them, sir, and I have asked them to come on board with the council and we do in collaboration to assist these horse owners. Most of these horse owners are coming from farming background, from the cane belt areas. So definitely, the council will help them if they come and work in collaboration with the council. Previously, the council was running the horse race in collaboration with the Horse Race Committee. But unfortunately, this was been removed by the previous government. And this is what we are trying to bring it back. And I have talked to the committees and as well as Nazakat to come on board with the council and we can run in collaboration. Definitely, the council is here to support you, my brother.
Naka.
Thank you, I've got another question.
Sorry, sir, you might, you have to see the-
Mr. Khan.
Administrator, like at the end of the event.
Please go and see Mr. Khan after this and then sort out the horse racing issue. Can we have the next person, please?
Next person, please.
Can we have the next person, please? Please be civil and follow instructions so that we can have everybody come to the microphone and ask questions.
The Ministry of Youth and Sports will also assist with the process of horse association registration.
Naka, sir, the next question.
Honorable Prime Minister, Ministers, Nisa Bulavinaka, my name is Zarunesh. I'm a young entrepreneur. Under the previous regime, there was an absence of justice during a subdivision of a particular land title. What town landed was packed right through the house, existing house. Is this justice, can action be taken from you, sir?
Thank you.
It looks like this is a civil matter. And discussing a civil matter in a public place is not the right forum. The Assistant Minister for Justice is available here, Ratu Josai Anuindamu. You can see him after this session. And you can ask him what the problem is and he will be able to assist you, sir. Thank you very much for bringing this up. Just because it may become detrimental, we are not allowing this question to go live on air. The next person, please.
Bulavinaka, Honorable Prime Minister and the Ministers, Mr. Singh. So I represent Turanganikoros from Nailanga, Wotu. Votua, Nawangarua and Natutu and Tongalevu.
Your name, please.
My name is Sacred Nayasal. Beginning with Nailanga Village, they're requesting the government to look into the river, riverbank that is having soil erosion. This riverbank was constructed back in 1985 by the Ratumara government. Moving on with Votua Village, sir. We have extended village boundary. And this village boundary needs water and electricity facility to be introduced to this new extended boundary. We have Votua Catholic Primary School, which is with the Korvo Matangali land. And if what the Turangani Koros are requesting, if this lease can be secluded from the, from the land, from the Matangali land. Also, we are looking at, we are requesting the government, if they can look into the road that is servicing three villages, which is Votua, Nawangarua and Natutu and to Tongalevu. This, we have a total estimated population of over 3,000. We have students which are more than about 600 students. And we also have senior citizens, sir. Most of the time, the drainage, we have drainage system. And if the road is not up to date, there is no transportation.
Naka, sir. Thank you, sir. He has raised four issues. One is about a retaining wall with the, with the, with the riverbank giving away at Nailanga. The second issue he raised was at Votua. They want a extension of the boundary of the Votua village.
Yep.
And the third was road conditions around that area. So first of all, I think riverbank is Ministry of Waterways and Agriculture. But Minister Tuiseau, if you are willing to.
Yes, yes. On the Waterways, that's in the Ministry of Agriculture and Waterways. They have a specific budget for that and I understand that request is with them. So I'll ask, is anybody here from Waterways, just to give an update on that?
Ministry of Agriculture and Waterways, any representative here? Okay, there's somebody here.
Can you just contribute on that? And I'll ask the source of the issue with roads, Votua and Tongalevu, do we want to remove in the FRA and also address the issue about water, COF? Please be ready. Thank you.
Can we have your name and designation with the ministry, please?
Honorable Prime Minister, Cabinet Ministers and colleagues. My name is Josiah Fosomelangi from the Waterways Department. In regards to Nailanga Village Riverbank Protection, I think that is within our plan for the new financial year. Visibility studies will be taken. And from then, then we do our planning for the continuation of the existing riverbank protection works.
This year or next year or?
Next financial year.
Next financial year. Next financial year, okay. The next question, the minister has directed FRA to come forward in regards to road conditions.
Yeah, Niambulusaka. I believe for the roads, we have a program for village frontage ceilings. I believe we already had sealed the front of Votua and Tongalevu in this current financial year. And the other two villages will follow through in the next financial year. And for the current condition, current road conditions, it's been maintained in our maintenance program on a monthly basis, eh?
Thank you very much, sir. Can we have the next person?
What authority?
Sorry, what authority?
Naka, just noting that your request is a new request for a new project at Votua, the extension of our services. We'll see you after this to get the details on the extension with respect to how far the extension that is being requested here, sir.
Naka, next person, please.
Please keep your questions short because we are running out of time. We have another 20 minutes left only for this broadcast.
To the Honorable Prime Minister and the Cabinet Ministers, my name is Mukesh Chandra. I'm residing at Kasita Settlement, eh? There is about seven to eight families living in my community without electricity. We have been promised from the previous government that we will be given electricity till date, but there have not been done. So please, my humble request to you, Honorable Prime Minister, I would like to leave this room with a positive answer. We need electricity to be installed in seven families that is in my community. Naka.
So what is your community?
Kasita Settlement, member.
It's a settlement? They need of electricity, sir?
Yes, we have our Director Energy. Please contribute.
Kerkeri Director Energy, can we have your name, please?
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Prime Minister. Michael Melena, the Director of Energy. Just regarding your question, yes, government is there to assist you. But we'll need to get your details for us to initiate the process. So we have our team and we can also get in contact with you after the meeting so that we can get all the details for us to assist you with your electricity supply. Naka.
Thank you, sir. Next person, please. Short and sweet, kerkeri.
So just to add to that, just to, our ministry staff are here, the various ministries. Please, they will list directly with you for those who have, we have indicated for you to contact them and in terms of the specific issue, for us to take down the name, contact number and the issue for our follow-up, eh? So that is not only for, it's for all the ministries here so that when we leave here, at least we have the details on what we need to work on in order for us to move forward. Naka.
Naka, madam, I can pose your question, please.
Naka, ma'am, the lady has just requested for electricity connection to her settlement. The rep from EFL, Energy, please.
The location is Itatoko Settlement.
So that's reassuring from the Energy Department. They will look into the request. Next person, please.
Just a comment on, we're going to talk about the direct energy. Just a general comment on in terms of the extension of the grid. So some of the issues we currently face include the loss of skilled manpower to carry out these works. And number two is the procurement process in terms of the materials. We need, most of this brought from overseas in terms of the timeline. And some of the issues with the contractors, eh? In terms of the efficient and effective performance of the contracts. So just sharing those issues with you today. Thank you.
Ratu, it's a busotea. We'll just get the first question answered. For non-Itoke speakers, the gentleman is asking for development of land in his, in the Tekina of Nailanga.
Votua and Tekino Mbulu, the land Tekino Mbulu but belong to Votua.
Votua, Tekino Mbulu, sir. They are requesting for development of the land. Can we have someone from the Lands Ministry, please?
Thank you very much. Rep of the Ministry of Mineral Resources and Lands. Please do give your name and your designation.
So who gave the approval for the land, the parkland to be leased? Anyone from the city council or the town council or Lands Ministry? Can we have the next person in line, please? Naka.
Bulabinaka, Honorable Prime Minister, Honorable Cabinet Ministers. My name is Amitishel Anthonybau and I'm the officer in charge of the Mbasa Bridge and LTB office. With reference to the question that has been raised, I believe a proper consultation has been conducted and the three land ownership units have already given the consent. Since the land is within the town boundary and it is deposited under as open space, so the land is deposited to the Ba Town Council. That's why the lease was given to the Ba Town Council for open space. Naka.
Thank you very much. The next...
Sir, you can see the gentleman from...
Thank you, Minister. The next person, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Prime Minister and all the ministers and the Commission of Police, good afternoon to everybody. I'm Ayub Mumad. I'm from Nmasomba. I'm a carrier driver. My issue is for the Twin Cave commercial vehicle. I was allowed from the council to drive commercial vehicle at the market carrier stand. I drive for three months the commercial vehicle, Twin Cave. And from the council, it was given one notice to me that you are not allowed to drive the commercial Twin Cave van. You have to immediately remove from there. I was paying the base fees to the council. I have got Rashid, everything I have got it. It was allowed from the council. What is the purpose of the commercial vehicle of the Twin Cave?
Thank you very much, Mr. Khan, Special Administrator Chair of Ba. Is that a true story that we've heard? That commercial vehicles are not being allowed to operate from the ba market area?
Thank you, Mr. Ayub, for your question. Yes, definitely, the council allowed him to operate Twin Cave, but there was a requirement that they need to take prior approval from LTA. According to LTA that we have, the representative of Ba, if he is here, they have mentioned us that basically the white plate they have been operating is illegal. They are considering it to the LC, the yellow plate. Naka.
When council knows that it was illegal doing there, how, when they knew it?
Thank you, sir.
I, I think I have answered your question. The requirement was you to go and get approval from LTA before operating the Twin Cave. Thank you.
Thank you. Hang on, hang on, sir. This is, hang on.
Can we get the next person, please?
I think Mr. Khan has given his response. It's a bit technical. You have to go to LTA to get your approval. And from there, you can operate from the town council boundary as he has stated. Can we have the next person, please?
So the LT, excuse me. The, the LT rep will talk to you after this, eh? About the process. Can you hold on it? Don't go. We'll talk to you to resolve it. Thank you.
Bulabinaka to all the ministers. I'm Jasvir Lal from Rawai Ba. My issue is with the FSC Rawai Mill. I think last few months, one month ago, the Sugar Minister have come to Visaru and BS where I have raised my concern about few issues of Rawai Mill, of OHS and the other issues I have raised and emailed them. Till now, they have never response me. And the stakeholders came in the meeting in Rawai Mill where the two stakeholders have mentioned that we all are Indians. We keep these issues inside the room. If we raise the issue outside, it will be like Itoke people will be laughing. And if, that's why the Rawai Mill is where it is today. My concern is, it's said to say, no propaganda room, no proper toilet is in Rawai Mill. And when we raise issues, company terminate. So my concern to Minister, please can you give me the answer for this question, please?
Minister Charanjit Singh, a direct question to you and hope you can be direct.
Thank you, Anish. Yes, Jasvir, I think you've been raising this matter with me and you've been sending texts and messages. As a minister, I don't operate the mill on a day-to-day basis. And I don't want to interfere with the management of the mill. So can I ask our CEO, Man? Can you come up and explain what is the position? And why, why are you ignoring the plights of the staffs?
The Chief Executive of South Fiji Sugar Corporation, Man Singh.
Thank you, Honorable Minister. I can confirm that the mill operates under all safety procedures. We have a safety committee in the mill. We have OHS regulators. We have OHS inspectors. And the mill operates. and the mill operates under all safety procedures, and we follow all the policies and operating guidelines as required by law. So we are not aware of the issues raised by Jasvir Lal, and we will look into specific issues if he has some that he wants to raise. Thank you, Honorable Minister.
I, I think I've got all the evidence, I have messaged Mr. Co2, and I also have PS email, and also the stakeholders. So please, I think after this, if I can talk to Minister and to get one committee to look into this matter before the sugar industry dissolve in BA, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lal. So stick around, you can speak to the Minister, and please do acknowledge the response given by Mr. Bhan Singh. So the next person, please.
Uh, my name is Rusia Tiwangga. Just a rep of the Abusa, Nanji Nomotomoto. The only question I want to ask, kerama ta na viki ni turanga PM. Na ona zobamba nga na ngai pashteki na bill ni UN Declaration of the Indigenous Rights, Pinaka.
When will the UN Declaration of Indigenous Rights will be passed?
Prime Minister is asking about the UN Declaration on Indigenous Rights and whether Fiji will accede to it. This is a very technical question.
Na wale. The United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People, is that the question? And whether Fiji has exceeded, has acceded to the, to the Declaration? Cabinet has already made a decision on that, and we will be acting on it. And I, I should have really gone back and told them at the UNGA what Fiji was doing, eh? We didn't do that because we didn't have the, the subsequent action that was required after Cabinet had, had endorsed it. It should go back to Parliament, and Parliament will authorize the accession to the, the.
Sa sawmibeka nomunitaro?
Sa sawmitoka ba vimo ama, na wale.
Oi. No. Me na wale, na ngai la niya di na Parliament. Because it is a national thing, eh, not just an executive decision. For the nation to decide, and representative to the people, who are in Parliament, they are the ones that do the regulation.
Na wale.
Vagambo ma tata tangan na Tekina. Sa vaganduni na Cabinet, ni vaganduni uwe ti na Ministry kwenka ravachigo sarutu lela lakata na ke na vingala ngala eso. Kwe meri ni wa botuka na ta ki ya na lawas ya na regulatione. Kwe sa lakata chuguna Ministry, eso sa wa botuka na ta ki, vakanake na ke to wa, vagambo tata me na kulistalmi na bosiliva turanga, bata ya na ndomo ni tokini bonu kina mate nduwe. Eh, nduwa Tekina mbimbi chuguna UN Declaration on Indigenous Rights ya na, uh, viba nduni ya na viba nduni ni matambo siluke buru, bata na ndundu ni tokini bonu. Kwe sa lakata chuguna onango, sa nduritalanga vidi na committee lomuni tamada da itoki. Me ngarabe ne na vila eso etara chuguna ka itoki, meri ni okwari ni pisuta ki se, ya talanga sa ortu lakata chuguna onango, ena, ena viti kina ya. Koo bandi takachuna singenda, na wale.
Thank you, Minister. Can we have the next person, please?
Anish, sorry, just to cut in, we have nine more questions, nine more people lined up. If we can try and accommodate it, that would be great, I leave it to you.
Please have your questions simple, simple, and do not explain. Just ask your question so that we can move quickly, eh?
Evening, sir. I'm Vishal Kumar, I'm from Elevuka Ba. We got a land issue. We got a notice to move out, nearly twenty people, twenty houses to move out from there.
Which area is this?
It's in Elevuka, just two minutes away from Ba Town.
And who has given the notice?
I can tell the name or no, like?
Who has given the notice?
No, no, do not mention the name.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you just carry on to your question, sir.
So we want, you know, our government to look into that matter. It's twenty houses.
He, he doesn't want to mention who has given the notice, but there is families at Elevuka who have been given a notice to move out. And what is the deadline to move out?
Soon as possible.
Okay, uh, please stick around there. Uh, I don't know which ministry or department will want to come forward. Can you hang on there? And when the minister comes down or the Prime Minister comes down, you can give more details to them, and maybe they will personally look into it. As I'm seeing, it could be a civil matter, which we don't want to discuss live. So just stick around there, and maybe after the town hall, we can meet up with somebody with the Ministry of Lands or the BA, or the Council, eh? Thank you for your question, sir.
Thanks very much.
Can we have the next person, please?
Nimbulubina ka, na dango siti beni limanisa, nduwa na farmer, atke na do talanga na trustini tokotocha. Ngu taronga me bala churto na TLTB. Go se mbitani na patataro meru to na TLTB na mbak saoche. Me adobo go, sen do na ka eru to mbitamae, do na kisi ya mbitani, saoche chen na mbaki ndu na, do beru to na, do beru to na kenzia eru to lisigogo, sen sawma chuguna onalisi. Na ndobe lao chugi ina FSC, wa sen sawme chigogo. Oh, follow up takachuma na mbak saoche, na mbaki ngo, ta beru to tu go na, oh, siu weftaka na, na onalisi. Lebu talanga na kisi.
Ratu da nomunitaro? Ni reni taro nga na nomunitaro kerkeri?
Sen nga na kango na e adotchigo e imba, beru to na TLTB na onango. Na dabai, weftaka ki na oh, siu na onalisi na.
Can we have a representative from TLTB?
Atke ndo so talanga ka, na sen do na consent la kweni viki to na tokotocha. Me bala ta ni nduwa e me lis. Ke to kota da kwe manje lo toka, okla ni ndabe chungo. Uh, sen do na, ke to ndolawa na file, sen do na consent leta me viki to na tokini ngel, yo na tendra sa ndabe tukiya, mbitu lo na wale.
Na wale, uh, se mandan nomunitaro?
Well, with regards to the questions raised, I believe the first one that you've raised, uh, I believe this Monday we have sat in the office, and we have discussed with him the way forward in addressing the issues that you've raised. I believe the, the first one in terms of the areas that was waived. There was a team that were doing the operation of doing the areas driving. I think they have mistakenly waived the tenant, it was, uh, and we have advised him that we are currently have written a letter requesting for the rent to be reimbursed again.
But, but that case I was raising from last year, notice, yeah?
So what can, what can you tell the gentleman here?
Uh, we've already ensured that we will process it.
That it's not repeated?
Yeah, that's right.
Can you assure the residents here, the gentleman, that it will not be repeated?
Eyo, vagambo ta ki ndu to sa vitanu na singamuni, ti siti ya na bukuni isu ni kota dekamai. Samata ta ti kuno ta vitanu. Yo, yo na kalye bo lau kachungo, bata oh, se mbitani from the last year till today, they're not giving me a feedback. Eyo, vagambo ta ki ndu sa vitanu ki sa mbiuma ndo na respond, ke to sa dakataxetsu na ki.
Na wale.
Kerer, yo chungo, roha vitanu ta le, meri ni lore na.
Don't, Pinaka.
So one of the key issues regarding these discussions we've had is the consent, the issue of consent. So we note that, and that will also be raised with the minister responsible in order to try to resolve this moving forward, because this has been a general issue raised by landowners, the consent of the landowner, Pinaka.
Thank you, Minister. The next.
Next question.
Jesus, close to raga tisu. Hi Mia, Siri Sanjeman, thank you for our Prime Minister and the parliamentaries and those who are sitting down. God bless them, in Jesus' name. I'm a four hundred ton cutting cane of Dasa sector, biggest farmer in Dasa sector of ten acres. And I'm suffering from the same premise of the water bowl government subsidy. It's locked by my real brothers and sisters, and my mother father is passed away in 2070. And we are no water at, at home, and two tenants are still in Old Fijians. They're suffering today from the water, and the government is not looking after the Fiji fest. Even the first government was the, not hiding everything, and nobody listening, and the police, and the advisory, and the DO's, Serini Wasan Money, he's my brother, DO, uh, uh, Serini Wasan is the advisory of Rabi Rabi, who is from the estate selling the Masima everything. Every time I'm complaining of calling to Charanjit Singh, our sugar industry, all the times, the file was given to Justice Turanga two weeks gone. We like, I've got my pretty wife and one daughter, like we're eating grass in the drains, and drinking water in the water wells, and I like the cow and the animals. And I'm suffering from my heart, oka. I'm, I want to buy another three land, but I can't. Because of the lawadi justice, I'm a in-person high court lawyer. And he has never suffered us. He has told Samuel Ram, he has told us, my, my mother is dead already.
Acha, acha, right, okay, apke question amo sunliya.
Right, thank you, God, bless you.
He has family dispute, ongoing family dispute.
That's not, already court has dissolved it. I've given the file to the Justice Turanga.
Acha, oh, hang on, hang on.
So, so he's saying nobody is listening, but?
The same Prime Minister was digged by government subsidy.
We're listening, we're listening to it now.
We are suffering today.
We're listening now.
Why are we suffering? Nobody listening?
Acha, acha, okay, right, sunli apke. Can we ask the Permanent Secretary for Sugar and Multi-Etnic Affairs to personally attend?
I'm paying the lease, he's mine.
Hang on, hang on, ask Bhaia, Bhaia. Permanent Secretary for Sugar and Multi-Etnic Affairs to please meet him, and?
If you want, I can share the file.
Right, right, yeah, boss awe, Sugar Minister La. And the minister has also asked Mr. Soderberg.
So he has.
Mr. Soderberg, the minister has also asked for you to attend to.
He has raised the water issue, drinking from the drains and that kind of. But can, can we talk to him about that location so that we can address it immediately? Regarding the water, I think that's one of the issue I caught from that presentation.
Thank you very much, the madam, can we have a question from you?
Please keep it short.
Thank you. The Prime Minister, Honorable, and the ministers, Bulag, good evening to all. My issue is this, that in the rainy season, in the disaster time, especially for the bar market, the grog stall behind the creek, to supposed to be dredge as soon as possible, that's very better for all of the market vendors and all the people of Fiji Bar District. And the other issue is that for the Varandoli Cemetery Road, the calvert problems. There is a very short problem, short calvert is there. So we want a big calvert so that, that the water will be go so fast. So it is a big disaster comes, it was a lot of traffic and plenty people are using that access. And the other third is, question is for the Vangia Road, especially, the Vangia Road is, the day by day is narrow. We want the proper drain both side, and the road supposed to be like before ten years, like a wide.
Thank you, ma'am.
And the fourth one, please, madam. Our fourth one is our, I'm the advisory councillor constancy as such as Savery Village. I want that Savery Village to the bus service should be provided, because there is a lot of people staying there as a settlement such as Itoke and the Indian people. Thank you.
Thank you, I believe the question is on drainage, road, FRA? Bus, bus route?
And SA BA get ready to explain why the bar market is leaking.
Nimbulubina ka, madam, I believe we just talked early this morning or yesterday. Uh, I was supposed to meet you next week, Thursday, to go over issues. So, but for the Varandoli Cemetery Road, it's designed as a low-level crossing. We've already done the concrete deck overlay just last month, Nak.
Thank you.
The Watia Road is narrow, Watia Road is narrow. Vangia Road, okay. Thank you very much. Uh, the bar market, dredging behind the bar market, is that somebody, somebody here who can explain? No? Waterways, Ministry of Waterways? No, okay. We have the next question, we have the next question so that we can move on.
Nimbulu saka na turanga Prime Minister, bulubina saka na leuniket. Uh, e usangam me teerro kwaanga, me na korro vanra vanra. Eh, nduwa sanga na kerkeri, bala ta na nitukoro, esanga tokina na, na bus bay. Na bus bay esanga sakatu ina korro vanra vanra. Do na bus bay eru to dakaba na tamana ni ngonsala na ona ya, na mbaki vida saoche. Eru to me dakaba sa ortu isake sara. Wa na bonu itukina nimbulumbulu, me basai na bulumbulu viva vanra vanra. Kerkeri nga keru ni dakana na bus bay, na matani korro, eh, vanra vanra.
Thank you. Request for bus bay, FRA rep, FRA is on the spot tonight.
Yeah, nimbulu saka, uh, na nomdo kerkeri sa chuksa na kani financiali angu, wa koe wa teki warabu eh. Na bus bay ke na basal, ko na matani nga nikor, koe di lo ni kor.
Thank you very much.
Four more questions. Next question.
Mr. Arvind Singh is here, and I think, Honorable Charanjit Singh, you will be in the line of fire here.
Honorable Prime Minister, Mr. For Sugar, cabinet secretaries, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much, Prime Minister. After three years, I'll see you in BA, first time up with the coalition government is the form. Pinaka, thank you Fiji media to organize this forum. As a, I'm, my name is Arvind Singh, I'm a sugar cane farmer, everybody is know with me. And I have lot to ask, lot to say, but time is running out. I just want, Honorable Prime Minister, you the chairperson of the Sugar Select Committee, please give a, uh, authority to the Minister for Sugar to come and have a meeting with the growers, dialogue with the growers. We don't want any pocket meeting whenever the minister come, he just have a pocket meeting and go away. We're not aware of that. Please, we want a full consult with the minister, dialogue with the minister about the sugar industry, because I am telling you today again, in this full house, sugar industry is dying, nobody is taking seriously. We are the last generation of the sugar industry, say. And you the chairperson of the Sugar Select Committee. I don't know, you aware of this or no? There's lot of thing is hiding under the table that you don't know. Please, I want this to be taken very seriously. This is concern from Singa Takoto Reke Reke, if the sugar industry die, the bedan will be on government. Bedan will be on government, what government you gonna do? Give what, pension? Hundred fifty, two hundred dollars a week to the person? Where is the money is gonna come from? So I have to cut down all this. As, as a Prime Minister, please tell Minister for Sugar to come and have a dialogue with the farmers. And at the reason, at the reason, at the reason problem we have, Honorable Prime Minister, the mill have broke down, is, is not operating at the moment. Farmers is suffering because we have sent the cane from here to Latoka Mill. The ban cane is the problem, so.
Thank you, sir.
Ban cane penalty say, ban cane penalty should be, should be suspend.
Sir, I believe.
For a time being say, for a time being say.
Sir, thank you, I believe Minister Singh, you need to spend more time with the growers, what do you say to that?
Uh, Arvind, thank you very much for your nice comment that you made. I have been to BA almost ten times, and I have made a point of meeting farmers in various part of the bar sector. I have never seen you come into any meeting. Number two.
Very true.
Number two.
Very true.
Number two, let me, let me tell you, the only reason you are complaining, because I did not appoint you back on the board of FSC. Because you never performed, you never performed. I've got, I've got twenty pages, twenty pages of complaint about you. And I'll tell you one thing, you are the only one who is saying that sugar industry will die.
Yes, I still am saying.
You must thank, you must thank this government.
I'm still saying to you.
You must thank this government that we have paid the highest price of sugar cane.
Because you don't know anything about the sugar, you are the businessman.
Thank you, sir.
You, you're not a farmer, you're not a farmer.
Sir, please.
Anyway. You're not a farmer, sir.
I'll tell you one thing.
Sir, we will let the minister think.
Mr. Singh and Mr. Singh, Mr. Singh and Mr. Singh. Mr. Singh and Mr. Singh.
I'm telling.
Please, hang on, hang on, hang on.
Okay, I don't want any answer from you, sir. Don't, don't, you don't give me, you give me answer when you have a, when you have a meeting with the growers.
Mr. Singh, don't let me call the police.
Okay, next. Okay, next, next time.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, sir.
Next, is another, the Prime Minister.
The Prime Minister wants to say something. Please, can you control yourself? The Prime Minister has to say something. Hang on.
Sir, can you say something about this?
He is asking for you, he is asking for you to direct the Honorable Minister for Sugar to go and meet him perhaps.
I can only check him, I cannot direct him. Well, you have a very unique situation here in Fiji, a very fortunate situation where the sugar minister, sugar industry minister is also a sugar cane farmer. So I do not know whether he is promoting government position or producer position. But he has worked very hard. And your concerns are his concerns. And we can only do so much. There are other farmers who are also crying out for subsidies and assistance to their crops. But because we have relied so much on the, the economy has relied so much for so long on the sugar industry. We want to keep it going. It is the one that is keeping us together and also very good from the social point of view where the races, the two major races interact and they have interacted well since 1879.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Singh, Mr. Singh, please, can we have the next question? I think other issues you can meet the minister.
Yes, yes, one, one, one to the Prime Minister, say. One to the Prime Minister, one to the Prime Minister, say.
We are running out of time. We are running out of time.
Honorable Prime Minister, say.
Okay, we'll...
There's five people behind you. Please, if you can be civil and move back, please.
Town council election and growers council election.
I'm asking you very nicely, please.
Town council election to be announced and growers council election.
I'm asking you very nicely to move back and meet the minister after this session, please.
Thank you, Mr. Singh.
Can we have the madam, please?
Good evening, all of you.
On the mic.
Thank you, thank you for coming. And my name is Anita and I'm from Taavenga Vengaba. And my issue is the water in Taavenga Vengaba is not very good. Every night at 10 o'clock, all, from four months, the water is not coming at night. 10 o'clock, the water closed and we have to suffer. And otherwise, another thing, the road is very bad in Taavenga Vengar Reservoir Road. Water Authority every time going up and down. When we tell them, they said it's not their problem. Please, can you solve that problem? Because when the children go to school, the rainy weather, we cannot send them to the school. The vehicles cannot go, go down. Please, thank you.
Water issues?
Water problem in Taavenga Vengar and road condition.
Yeah, I note, I note your concerns. Thank you for raising that regarding the road and the schools being affected. So the FRA is noting that. We will definitely look into that. In terms of the water, I'll ask CEO Water Authority to contribute to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sir Sodaberg, water problem in Taavenga Vengaba. The water closes at 10 p.m. every day according to him.
Thank you, uh, thank you very much, ma'am, for your question. I just wanted to also highlight with the current dry spell we're having here in Fiji. We are also doing valve operations. That is why water supply would be going out at 10 p.m. We run valve operations in order to fill our reservoirs, in order to restore services in the morning. I do take note of your concerns on the road and the impact of burst mains or leaking service pipes. I'll have a discussion with our team and look at resolving that matter ASAP. Winaka.
Winaka, Mr. Sodaberg, can we have the next person, please? Kere Kere, short question?
Yes, I'm Nambula Riki. I'm working for Rupeni Junior, May Natala Ghe. I'm working for the carrier driver. I'm working for the carrier driver. I'm working for the carrier driver. I'm working for the 150. I'm working for illegal operating. I'm working for illegal operating.
I believe he's referring to what, Donna Base?
Yes, ma'am.
A base, a carrier?
Carrier base.
Carrier base in town?
Yes.
Okay, he's requesting for a carrier base.
Yes.
And how many carriers do you operate?
I'm working for the carrier.
Okay. Can we have LTA, please? Mr. Vitala?
I'm working for the town council. I'm working for the town council. I'm working for the town council. I'm working for the town council.
Application has already been lodged with the town council as well. Can we have the gentleman ready, please, sir?
Winaka, I'm Nambula Riki. I'm working for the Vitala Ghe. I'm working for the Vitala Ghe.
Winaka.
Thank you very much. We have a last question on the floor for this evening. There was some tension. Hopefully, we finish in a very subtle note. Thank you, sir. Your question?
Winaka, Honorable Prime Minister and the cabinet ministers. My name is Ananda Chari and I'm from Ndi. I come from a tourism town and I, and I have a tourism company in Fiji for the last 25 years in Ndi. My question is straight to the Minister of Transport. I would like to know if the public service vehicle permit is on freeze? Yes or no?
Yes and no, both. Because the permits are open for minibus, carrier and hire, but not the taxi. The taxi permits is currently, we are, the team is working on it in terms of the implementation and the processes to be in place, including the requirements and also the issue of our bases. And of course, as I already explained, we have already done an assessment of the needs, needs analysis for the various areas and the quota for taxis which need to go in a specific area.
Sir, I'm not...
So all that, all that is being currently put in, in, as part of the assessment moving forward and the implementation. Because with those, there will be amendments to various regulations which are currently being worked on with the Solicitor General's Office. And once that's done, then we will announce the timelines and the processes moving forward so that it is not done in a chaotic manner which can create confusion. Thank you.
Sir, I'm not asking about taxi permits. I'm basically asking about rental car permits and hire permits because my tourism company is not dealing with taxis at all. It's only dealing with rental cars and rental permits.
Yes, that's the, the process is there. I'll ask the LTA to explain that. Thank you.
LTA, Mr. Vitala?
Winaka, I believe we met in Suva during the Rental Car Association meeting. Okay, just for your information, rental car is on temporary freeze for us to complete our audit on all the rental vehicles that are operating on our roads. Specifically, we are targeting the safety of vehicles and the standard. So once that is complied with, we will review the current temporary freeze before we advise the minister on the outcome of the audit of all the rental operators in Fiji.
But do you realize that I do not run rental cars? I run ATV quad bikes and motorcycles. This is not cars.
Okay, hang on, hang on. I think you are going around. You started with rental cars, now bikes. Can you meet the LTA after this? Because we have to wrap up, we have to wrap up the program.
The point is, the permits are only one permit, whether it's a rental car or a motorcycle, the permit is one permit.
Can you meet the LTA rep here after this? Because we have to wrap up, we have run out of time. Thank you very much for your question. Before we wrap up, can I just quickly ask the Honorable Prime Minister to give his thoughts, maybe a minute or two, on what transpired yesterday? What are, what are you taking back with you when you go to Suva?
Winaka, may I thank Anish and his team from the Fiji Media Association for bringing us together today. I apologize for having to get up and have a photo taken with a lady and her son. She asked for, for us to meet and shake hands. We have had tonight many requests. And in our work, we get many requests. Those who are here and Christians know the story of the nine people who were assisted by the Lord. And only one came back to thank him. And this lady panicked with the rest of the staff of the college where she teaches. She is the vice principal of that college. And on the day of the parade of the cadet unit, they found out that the band they had relied on couldn't come to the parade at Govin Park. And they panicked and she called and I called the commissioner of police and the commander and whoever had a band at the time to see if they could come to Govin Park for the cadet passing out parade. She has come tonight just to say thank you for that. And so many of us asked and asked and asked. And when we come to this, we worry because we are being asked the questions. And we do not know whether you have had interaction with the various officers that should be handling your problems. We come here and you ask and officials, and I must thank them, get up and answer your questions very well. If you had been interacting every day or during their work time and not wait for town hall discussions, I'm sure many of your problems would not have been brought up in this forum. And I would like to encourage you and encourage your officials to keep the communication lines open. Because we are really promoting this government as a government that listens, not only listens, actually acts on your requests. And I ask that we do that. We have questions tonight for the roads upgrade in even bus bay in, in the vicinity of the villages. Sugar industry questions, social, social, what do you call it?
Social protection.
No, what's the name of the ministry?
Social protection.
So, yeah, social welfare and all those things. We have all those questions being asked tonight. And the officials here have answered them very well. And I would like to thank them, thank their ministers. But remember this, while we are out here, our files are piling up in the office. When I went today, I tried to clear the files. It piled up from yesterday and yesterday afternoon. I couldn't do it because I had Navwa and some, some other place and then came here. So give us time to respond to your questions, your queries and your requests. And when you do get a satisfactory answer from us, tell the people or when you come back, you say, thank you very much. We asked this the last time, we came to the office for this and we got it. Winaka.
Thank you very much, Honorable Prime Minister. Thank you to the Minister for Sugar, Charanji Singh, Minister for Infrastructure, Ro Felipe, and to the assistant ministers present and the representatives of various government ministries and the people of Mba, Vinando Riki, for joining the Fiji Media Association Town Hall, supported by the U.S. Embassy. So until next time, tonight has been a show and exercise, a true exercise of democracy. The people asked. Right, and thank you to the owners of the Katria Hall from the Prime Minister and the Fiji Media Association. So tonight has been a show of democracy. The people asked, the leaders listened and responded. So this is what town halls are all about. And until our next town hall, Vinando Riki from Katria Hall in Bar.